I would like to introduce now our speaker, program speaker for today. It is Commissioner Chris Philios. I'm sure you all have seen him before and he is not a stranger to any of us. I want to thank him for coming, ladies and gentlemen. Here's Commissioner Chris Philios. Go ahead, Chris.
Hey, thanks, Ruben. Thanks, everyone. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay, cool. Thank you so much for hosting me. I always look forward to speaking with a group such as yours, which is always civil and peppers with well-thought-out questions. So I truly appreciate it. What I'll do first, I'm going to go through a number of items. I'll probably run through them fairly quickly and then this way you'll have plenty of time to ask questions. If you feel you need to interrupt, by all means, that's fine. With regard to COVID-19, I was going to start in a different order, but I know this is something that Ruben stressed. So let me go there first. We, I signed the emergency declaration back in mid-March and that's what basically set us on emergency footing. We activated the Emergency Operations Center and then, of course, the cities themselves took it upon themselves to expand on that as well. Insofar as the impact, you're probably seeing the numbers. Our numbers are increasing, unfortunately, and the testing that is being conducted throughout the state and especially in Cootenay County right now is showing about a 10% infection rate. So that's not very good. I imagine the governor and his epidemiologists are looking at it very carefully. One of the questions that comes up, and it comes up quite often of late, is will we mandate masks? Point number one, we cannot mandate masks in the cities. Our jurisdiction in this regard really doesn't go there. So that's really up to the mayors and the city councils. As far as the unincorporated areas concerned, we are not currently considering mandating masks. If we had to, I don't believe I could get the second vote, to be perfectly candid. Now, if the situation continues to deteriorate and/or the governor says, hey, wait a minute, we're stepping back from stage four, my guess is we would probably, and this is me speaking for myself, mandate it on county facilities. When you get into the unincorporated areas, you almost can't enforce it. It's very difficult. But I tend to tell you that when the initial order was established back in mid-April by the governor, our KCSO, Sheriff's Organization, was turning people back from the state of Washington who were congregating in our parks. And so that may be an option if we go forward or if this situation deteriorates. But for now, we're not mandating masks. I do believe it's foolish for people to congregate without them, but I can't speak for the city. So that's where we are. Along, going further, and Phil had asked me about this earlier. There's a proposal that has been put forth by the governor's office, which taps into the $1.25 billion that is being made available to the state of Idaho as a result of the CARES Act. And he wants to take $188 million of that and distribute it to the counties for tax relief, property tax relief. And the way that would occur is that it would reimburse the wages of first responders for the period from mid-March extending to the end of December. And so the qualifying entities would be sheriffs, law enforcement, firefighters, OEM, some of the medical professionals, and it's basically first responders kind of a thing. And it is not to compensate us for lost revenue, but rather to pay for the wages that were expended. Unfortunately, the Department of Treasury has not blessed this initiative. And so while we are required to respond officially next week as to whether or not we choose to participate, we still don't have an answer from Treasury. Now, the AG's office has opined and they've said, yeah, you're good. It looks like you can do this. It looks like it's legal. So what might happen next week is we decide to apply for it, but not necessarily commit ourselves to accepting the funds. Now, there is a caveat, and the caveat is that if we actually were to proceed with this and accept the money, and I have no idea how much it is, but if we were to accept the money, we cannot raise taxes. Property taxes are frozen at zero, okay? And the amount of money that we would get would be basically something around at 103% of the expenses that I indicated earlier that we incurred. So that extra 3% is to pay for administrative costs and whatnot. And so basically, and it's up to each taxing entity to make their own decision. If it's a fire district or cities, they make their own, okay? What's interesting is we took a cursory look at it and say, okay, how much would the state have to reimburse us for those pertinent expenses? And the figure that we came up with, and please don't recite this or it's just very cursory, I could be way off. And if this is probably high, it would be $20 million. Well, that's interesting. $188 million, you're going to give us 20. God knows what you're going to give Ada. How far is this money going to go? But let's say hypothetically, they gave us $20 million. If you divide the $20 million by 87,000 taxable parcels in the county, everybody would get a rebate or a credit of about $220 on their property taxes. But that's just to give you a figure, if you will. The problem is, how do you implement this? How do we change our programs? Does the assessor, excuse me, the treasurer just go in and say, okay, everybody's going to get a line item credit? As it is, we're going to be challenged because obviously we collect taxes for the entire county, for all the taxing districts. So even if we, as a county, do not participate, the cities might, fire districts might. So we have to somehow program this thing in. In any case, no position, official position yet on the part of the county and no official position by Treasury. So we could be on delicate ground here, but now you know what I know. So again, that's as far as we go with COVID. Now, actually, there are other spinoffs from the COVID situation and I'll go into the question of the fair. As you know, last month, we canceled the fair and it was canceled for two reasons. Number one, there was no way we could guarantee proper social distancing. And when the decision was made last week, our figures, our infection rate was really only beginning to spike. And now, of course, as you know, it's gotten much worse. So in retrospect, we probably made the right decision. The other consideration was the Fair Board, which is a seven-member board and advises us, voted unanimously not to proceed with the fair. And their concern was that if we were to have continued on course with the fair and sign the various contracts or contracts with the various vendors and then cancel, we could be on the hook for at least $800,000. It would bankrupt the fair. So we had to make a decision that if we were going to save the fair, we basically had to kill it for this year, and that's what we did. And let me add something here and I'm going to weave this throughout some of the items that I share with you. And I'm going to be very, very blunt. When I mask, you know, what are my biggest challenges? It's not so much the technical aspects of the work we deal with, although those can be challenging as well, especially taxation, Board of Equalization, and the myriad of topics we deal with. But it's the hassles we get from the far right, people who fear 5G, who refuse to wear masks because it's tyrannical. And I listen to these pseudo-Constitutional experts who frankly don't make any freaking sense. How's that for being blunt? And this is the crap that we deal with. And I'm going to come back to that because I need you folks, get on Facebook and start engaging. You can take some hits because we take a lot of them here. And I'll tell you right now, if you get on Facebook and you start taking issues with some of these people, some of them will back off. And I'm going to come back to that because I'm actually issuing you a challenge as we go along. I cannot engage on Facebook. If I do that, it really jeopardizes my ability to do my job. I did it a little bit during the campaign and I'll come back to it. Okay. A couple of other things that are going on. As long as we're on COVID and I touched on the subject, let me touch on the protests. I think, Ruben, you wanted me to touch on that as well?
Yeah, a little.
Okay. My take on the protests, especially the ones locally here, is that they were, when we talk about the protests, let me back up. Number one, I don't believe Antifa was here. I believe it was a rumor that was promulgated by somebody on the far right so that they could find an excuse to show up with their guns. That's my take. And I believe they were wrong. I think the bigger issue again are groups like Proud Boys, Buggaloo, if you've heard of them, look them up, people in the American redoubt. Antifa's not going to waste their time in Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. Why? You know, we're 50 cities, 53,000 people. The county's about 167,000. Might have been an issue in Spokane. I can't speak to that. My particular disappointment was, and I don't have all the facts here. I need to be careful, is that I don't understand why Coeur d'Alene PDs stood aside and let these guys and ladies carry on. Some of them had their weapons, they were loaded, and they were drinking. And there is state law against that. And the other thing too, is that it is my understanding, and I believe there are legal opinions here, that only the governor can activate a civilian militia. So I believe that the actions that were taken downtown were illegal. But it is what it is. I don't know if anything further is going to come of it, but I personally, I don't like it. And I plan to talk with the mayors and express my views. It's going to make a difference. But it's a problem. It should not have occurred. I heard cases or incidents of people who are considering potentially relocating here and saying, forget it, I don't want any part of this. And quite frankly, if I weren't living here and happened to be vacationing and witnessed this, no way would I have moved here. To me, this is anarchy. This isn't people protecting establishments. This is anarchy, folks. Let's call it what it is. But anyhow, that's my personal take. I think if you spoke with one of my other commissioners, you, believe me, would get a very different take. And I might add that one of them was down there with her guns. So I'll leave that with you.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate that, man.
I have to tell you, folks, if we don't engage, and I don't mean, I don't mean with guns. I mean engage on Facebook, express your opinions, tell people we don't like it, we don't want to stand for it. It's going to continue and it's going to get worse. And I don't know what the composition of these groups is. I don't know if it's ex-law enforcement. I believe a lot of it is. And I'll share something else with you while I'm on this. About a year and a half ago, not this past November election, but let's say November of 18, two Democrats, two women, very qualified commissioners of Ada County. And shortly after that election, it was just a matter of days, I was here in my office or actually between flights and I ran into Seth Grig. Seth Grig is the Executive Director of the Idaho Association of Counties. And I said to Seth, I said, man, I don't get this. Ada County elects two Democrats. I'm still fighting the right-wing wackos up here. I will never forget what he said to me and I really need to share this and I've shared it quite a bit. He said to me, your problem is Orange County. Orange County's conservative. They move here, they drift further to the right and before you know it, they're part of the anarchists. And this is the problem we have. If you look at the composition of the Republican Central Committee, I would have to rank most of them somewhere between libertarian and anarchist. And I'll give you a very specific case in point. When I was campaigning, well, four years ago now, I stopped by a local business and this particular individual, who is a member of the Central Committee, was complaining about the increases that the prior board that I was certainly not yet a part of had given to law enforcement. He basically felt it was generous. His comment to me was, and please don't ever forget this, why do we need law enforcement? We're all armed, quote-unquote. Folks, this is serious. This is scary stuff and it's real. But okay, I'm going to leave it at that for now. But by the way, what Seth Grig explained to me when he mentioned Orange County and compared Cootenay to Ada, Ada draws from a wider geography and a wider demographic. We have people on the Central Committee that for years have been targeting Orange County to recruit like-minded individuals. This is what we're permeated with up here. So bear that in mind. And while I'm on that topic, and let me come back to that, okay? So let me also touch on the recent elections. I'm sorry?
Quick question. Where is Orange County physically?
Southern California.
Okay, so it's not the one in Florida. It's the one in California.
No, no, Southern California.
That's what I thought, yeah.
It's where John Birch Society started, as I believe, correct?
Yeah, I believe you. And that's, thank you for pointing that out. When Richard, what was his face, Richard Butler came here. Richard Butler hailed from Southern California, the original area, let's say that, okay?
Yeah.
He was a retired aerospace engineer. He wasn't a stupid man. But this whole, this whole, how do I put this? Much of this extremism and intolerance is really coming from there. I do not believe it's homegrown. In fact, if I hearken back to the Vietnam War days, who led the charge to put an end to the war? It was Senator Frank Church of Idaho. So those of us who are older, remember that. This nonsense is not homegrown, folks. It's coming out of Southern Cal. And I don't mind calling it what it is. I'm originally from New York City, so I'm used to being blasted. So I take it upon myself to call them out for what they are.
That's right.
And that is the problem up here. As long as they keep migrating or immigrating, however, relocating, excuse me, we're going to have a problem. But there it is. That's straight from me. I'm going to come back to that. Okay, let me talk about the local elections for a moment. Okay, so we just had our primary, right? In May? And what's fascinating is I looked at your vote, the Democratic vote. In the presidential primary in March, there were 8,900 Democratic votes. In the May primary, which was mostly local elections, county commissioners, sheriff, legislators, your vote was 7,000. What's fascinating is there's a 1,900 vote difference. I believe that some of those votes were people who changed party to Republican. I have to tell you, I don't know who you are, but bless your hearts, because if you hadn't done it, I would have lost. I am not popular in the northern part of this county for two reasons. Number one, the 3% tax increase that we put into effect for this current fiscal year, without which our deputies would not have been competitive with Coeur d'Alene and our general employment, our general employment base, which was lagging behind other jurisdictions for years, would not even begun to catch up. And secondly, you remember the whole building code issue? When people wanted the right to opt out of building codes? When that was passed in the spring of 18, I dissented. Nevertheless, I was outvoted 2 to 1. But this past spring, spring of 2019, thanks to Bill Brooks, I got the second vote. Building codes are now mandatory again in the county. But the problem again, let's go back to Orange County. Where are they settling when they move up here? Athol, Rathrum. So my biggest losses occurred in that northern tier because they want to do what they want to do. And I don't know how many of you actually had the opportunity to attend the hearings for this opt-out, you know, the opting out of the building codes. And what I would hear over and over again was, I left the occupied zone. At one point, I said, that's your problem. This is not a free-for-all up here. We've had codes for decades. Now, all of a sudden, you want to make them optional? David Callahan, who directs our community development, said, as a result of the opt-out, there will be an injury or a death. Because if you give people the chance to opt out of building codes and if they can build crap, that's what they're going to build. All because they don't want to spend a dollar a square foot to have inspections and proper permitting. But again, this is what we're recruiting, folks, and this is what's coming in. So I had to get that off my chest too. But back to the elections again. And here's potentially the silver lining. Okay, so Republicans dominate up here. If you look at the elections at the local level, there was really, there were some victories for moderate Republicans. Bill Brooks, myself, Doug O., running against Tim Kasting, Peter Riggs defeating Mark Everline and Alex Barron, both very extreme, okay? And Bob Norris, one of the probably most reasonable of the sheriff's candidates. So in many ways, the moderates, more centrist, if you will, basically prevailed. But here's the problem now. These guys on the Central Committee don't go down easy. So I just learned today that Jeff Tyler, and if you don't know who Jeff Tyler is, he's the Director of Northwest Property Owners Association, NWPOA, which is pretty, they're a property rights group, but they get involved in a lot of other things and they frankly don't even understand property rights, but that's beside the point. And basically take a very individualistic approach to property rights, is planning to run as a write-in against Doug Akinowitz. And that's, I want to say that's like the Hayden District thereabouts. And there's another gentleman named Brett Surplus, who wants to run as a write-in against Peter Riggs. Once again, Peter Riggs won the primary nomination for Senate against Mark Everline and Alex Barron. Typically, in the state of Idaho, write-ins don't win. It's a very slim chance. Now Brett Surplus is very far right. He wears a T-shirt that says Band of Brothers, which leads me to conclude that probably a fair percentage of the membership of the far right must be ex-law enforcement from elsewhere. And that concerns me greatly, but it is what it is. I'm issuing a wake-up call, folks. You've got to vote. You have got to vote in November, okay? And it's critically important. And if you get a chance to get on Facebook, and you certainly don't have to participate in the vitriol, but you can engage some of these people on these various threads and respond to them. So let me get on to some brighter news if I can. Anybody have any questions?
I just wanted to say one thing, Chris. Not everybody from Orange County are bad people coming up here to be Republicans because I come from Orange County.
Well, no, and you're absolutely correct. And I'm glad you pointed that out, Ruben. I'm simply trying to tell you that a good part of what has taken us this far right is from there.
And I think one of the reasons for that is is because many people actually had, who were thinking about moving anyway, once Orange County started going to the left with the election of Loretta Sanchez and those groups, that's when they say, you know, they gave up and they started moving. And unfortunately, they started moving here.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Patty, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to contribute something there. My dad and grandparents were all from Wallace, Idaho. Yet when my dad moved to Orange County, California, where I spent a significant part of my childhood, that was the John Birch draw there.
There you go.
I think there was a problem here, even going way back then. And this would have been in the 50s. And I think people are drawn to areas that seem to empathize with their belief system, if that makes sense.
I think you're absolutely right.
But I agree with you 100%. The problem is from Orange County, but I think the problem goes back a lot further than we imagined.
You may be absolutely right, yeah. Thank you for that. I'll touch on some other topics. Well, obviously, you're all familiar with the tragedy, the air crash. You might have read in this morning's paper that the last body has been retrieved. Sadly, it wiped out a family of, I don't know if it was four or five, but it is what it is. Thoughts and prayers go out with those folks. What else can I share? Oh, the budget. Okay, so we have about another week and a half before we, I shouldn't say officially, before we, as a BOCC, vote on the budget to forward into, excuse me, into publication and then the actual public hearing for the budget, I want to say is August 25th. It'll be in the evening. Right now, as it stands, we're going in with a 0% property tax increase. And part of the reason for that is that the state has really backed us into the corner with this property tax relief package that they're proposing. So we'll be probably going in at 0 and it looks like we can balance the budget and still do that and give a modest level of increase to our employees. But that's where we're headed right now. We just completed, well, actually Monday, we will have completed what's referred to as the Board of Equalization. Every year, for two weeks typically, by state statute, we, as a Board of County Commissioners, sit as the Board of Equalization where we hear people appealing their assessments. And this year, we had about 60 appeals. And over the past several years, they've ranged from 60 to about 120. And so we have the last one. I think we reschedule for Monday and that completes it. And so that's what we do. We hear the appeals. Typically, what happens with those appeals is the burden of proof is on the appellant. So essentially, the assessor is assumed right until proven otherwise. And so I can tell you, with 95% of the appeals, we go with the assessor. Kind of a difficult process. At times, it hurts to see appellants lose. But sadly, this is the process. It's required by statute and it's hard for appellants to come up with the necessary data to go against the assessor. But occasionally, it does happen and we get the unpleasant task of making that decision. And we move through them pretty quick. We usually allocate about 30 minutes per appeal. Some of these appeals are commercials and they're complex, but we do the best we can with it. So that's almost wrapped up. Let's see, what else do I have for you? The Romer House. How many of you are familiar with the property on the corner of Government and Foster? Okay, so about three years ago, shortly into my first term, we negotiated the purchase of a house on the corner of Foster and Government, which is referred to as the Romer House because that was the law front that was in there. And we purchased it. We paid, I negotiated the deal. We paid, I think, $425,000 for it. And it sits on a little more than a third of an acre. And we really did it because we needed the land for expansion. Well, the house has some quasi-historic value. It's certainly not on the historic registry. So over the course of our ownership, people came up and said, you can't demolish this. We really, it's a historical home. You know, we need to preserve it. We tried moving it and nobody came forward to move it because it's too big. We never had any offers on it though. I cannot say that we officially tried to sell it. So where we are now is there are a group of people led by a woman named Julianne Dance, who want to turn it into a music conservatory, which I think is a great idea. But they really have until the end of September to raise the money to purchase it. So we have to have an appraisal done. And if we sell it, we really cannot, I don't think the state allows us to sell it for less than appraised value. So that's where we are. We're going to have to offer it up and it'll be to the highest bidder, presumably. But if we do decide to do that, we're going to have some restrictive language in there so that nobody can build more than a two-story structure so that it doesn't go into a 12 or 14-story high-rise. And that's something we can do legally. I'd like to see the conservatory be able to pull this off, but I don't know. There is a conservatory in Sandpoint that started with four students. They're up to 400. Though I don't see why we can't do it here, but it's really going to be up to the group to try to raise the money. Other than that... Other than that, I'll entertain any questions you might have.
Sean has had his hand up.
Sure.
John, go ahead.
Hey, Chris. Thank you so much for coming today. Congratulations on your reelection. So glad to have you as a voice of reason on the panel of three. My questions are, I have two questions.
Sure.
One, I'd like to find out about Mike Bauer. If you know, he is running against, or he's running as an independent for sheriff.
Yes.
Do you know anything about him? From, from, from what I understand, he's running a nonpartisan independent race. He's not claiming one party or the other, and he is going to be a write-in.
That is, that is correct, Sean. He is registered already or filed, excuse me, as an independent. He wants Richard Whitehead, who ran for sheriff, as his undersheriff. I don't think they have a chance. Bauer lives down in the Carlin Bay Area, and I'm familiar with one of his neighbors. They're friends of ours. The only thing I can tell you is they don't think terribly highly of him. I also saw one of his posts on, it was a Facebook thread, and he accused me of cutting him off at a presentation, and I don't do that unless somebody exceeds their time limit. So I'm not impressed. I do think he has some law enforcement background, maybe even quite a bit, but yes, he's running as an independent against Bob Norris.
Okay. My second question would be, so go for assessment, and I do, I do agree with you. I've been stating the same, same theory about the Orange County recruitment. Mostly, you know, law enforcement or retired law enforcement, folks who have kind of already moved into that racist, or racist light, if you will, space. So, so we've identified the problem. What's the solution? I mean, you're saying go out and vote. Yes, voting is absolutely important. But I think it's also, we think about our community as a whole. How do we start recruiting the right kind of people here, or people who are more tolerant? Who, you know, bring some diversity to our community and all the good things that come with that? Your thoughts on that?
Okay. My thoughts are this, we're basically two years away from the next primary, and, and most of these local, local elected offices are decided at the primary. I would say we need a coalition of Democrats, Republicans, independents to potentially organize and do so in a manner where we take a multi-pronged approach with regular press releases that basically sends the message that we do not want to be, we don't want to be a community that's known for intolerance. And I think the only way, right now, we are very polarized, and that has to change. Unless we can change that, we're going to, this problem is only going to get further aggravated. And so what I would suggest is trying to get a group of people together. Maybe we start with a core group of twelve or fifteen people and recruit a bunch of people together and create this, I don't know what, how you'd want to, how you would want to label it. But something that basically says, we welcome people, we welcome the diversity, we really don't want to be known for intolerance and extremism. Now, maybe that's not a very positive message, and maybe we can turn it in such a way, and I'm certainly, I don't have all the answers, clearly, where we turn it into a more positive message, but I think that's what has to happen. Short of that, it's voting. But how can I say to you, you guys have your principles? If I were to say to you, stop voting for Democrats in the May primary, because they're not going to win anyway. So shift your vote to Republicans, get moderates in there, and that's where you're going to begin to make the change where then some Republicans actually eventually start to cross over and vote for Democrats that they consider reasonable. But then you're abandoning what you believe are your principles. Okay, how can I ask you to do that?
Yeah.
Well, oh. Go ahead. I'd just like to make a comment. I did that this year for the first time ever in my life. For seventeen days, I was a Republican. I don't know how many of you realize that, so that I could vote primarily for Chris, of course, but also because I was scared to death by all of the, the majority of the sheriff's candidates. I thought, you know, people like, excuse me for calling names, but people like Whitehead, you know, and, and, and that group. I just felt that it was important enough to make that change so that I could at least try by my vote to assure that that didn't happen. So I see nothing wrong with that. I think the problem we get into is we wouldn't have to do that if we could find a way to get rid of closed, closed elections, closed primaries. I don't see that happening either. But until that does, we just have to work it out, I think, on a, you know, election-to-election process. But I like the idea, I like the idea of starting to come together on different things and get a coalition. Kathy, you've had your hand up for a while, so please, please go ahead.
Hi, Chris. Thanks for being here. I want to talk about the fair.
Yes, ma'am.
I watched it take place, the hearing and all, and it was a hard decision you guys had to make. And it would have been easier if you were making it this week than it was when you actually made it. But there were two issues. One was health and safety.
Yes.
And the other was fiscal.
Yes, correct.
And I just want to, I want to tell you, I thought you handled it very, very well. This is not a criticism. It's a suggestion for future.
Please.
I felt that as a county commissioner, as a Board of Commissioners, perhaps the most important part of the decision was the fiscal. And I felt that you made it a little weak.
Oh, okay.
And we knew that the crazies were going to come in and try to make those of us who are concerned about health issues their focus and try to make us look stupid for being worried about ourselves. But on the fiscal side, you made the point, but you made it in such a way that I thought it was diminished. It wasn't as important as it really was. And I thought it was a great opportunity for you to help them, the opposition, make clear to their followers what they were really suggesting. You made the point, we could be on the hook for this. But had you made the point, what you are requesting by asking us not to cancel is you are saying that you are willing to have the taxpayers foot the bill for this potential six hundred thousand dollars. You said all the right things. I am just suggesting that you, in the future, take a look at the possibility of highlighting what these people are really asking for. Because they didn't touch the fiscal in any way, shape, or form because they knew that was the third rail. They stuck with the health. I hope I'm making myself clear, but I thought, I thought you did an excellent job. And I commend you for the courage of your decisions.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it. Before I take another question, there is another decision that we made last week. I don't know whether or not you followed it, but as a result of this one and a quarter billion, and by the way, thank you, I appreciate it. As a result of the one and a quarter billion dollars that the state is getting, they're allocating, or the governor's office is about fifty million dollars for rural broadband. So what happened is Intermax is competing or, or putting in a, an application to build two cell towers, one at Best Hill and the other on Lone Mountain, to expand their service into the rural areas. Well, as it turns out, because they actually have to have this implemented by December fifteenth, if we were to have followed the normal course of getting a conditional use permit, they would have been cut short on the timeframe, and they might not have been able to make, to implement in time. So what happened was, there is a code, sixty-seven dash, I think it's sixty-seven twenty-three, that basically gives us county commissioners the right to short-circuit the, the formal approval process with public hearings in cases where we deem there may be impending harm or imminent peril, I think is what it says, in the areas of public health, safety, and welfare. Well, when you look at the terms that the state, that the state is citing for allocating this money, it's for telemedicine, remote learning, and other similar things. So we basically invoked that particular, that particular statute in a two-to-one vote. Leslie voted against it. Well, the far right came out and said, you're taking it away from us. And we had people in the room who were worried about 5G radio waves, and I'm thinking, oh, here we go again. In any case, we passed it. We are, we're not supplying any money for this. The only thing we're doing as a county is managing the grant process, because we have people who do that. Intermax are the ones taking the risk, putting up the money, and their application is actually due to the state next week. So, and of course, led by Brent Regan, they came out again and didn't like it, and of course, we had to deal with that as well. But that was another decision, something almost similar in controversy, if you will, to the fairgrounds, but we passed it.
Good, thank you. Mary Lou, you've had your hand up?
I have. Well, Chris, thank you for bringing up these different subjects. I think we could talk for a long, long time. All of us are frustrated. I'm especially frustrated about the militia issue. Now that I'm living downtown, I was very aware of the fact that we had these people on every corner during those four days with guns and the, you know, the, all of the, all of the things that we're worried about with guns and children, et cetera. But I think I, I'm, I can't figure out. I haven't talked to Amy Evans or Dan English. I do not know what the city council was doing backing up the mayor on thanking them, because they're going to keep coming again and again.
Absolutely.
So, and frankly, you know, I don't like Facebook, and I'm not going to become a Republican. And, and so we really need a strategy. I don't know where Tony Stewart is and all of these. Where, where's, where are the, the, where's that organization? And so other than making us Republicans, which we really can't do, that's not our charge. We can't. And, you know, what, what, how do we strategize? How do we organize? And Sean, you should be jumping in here and organizing, because you're good at that. We need, we need to be somehow more aggressive.
You know, before we leave, and I almost neglected to mention this, and you might have heard about it. Thanks to a bunch of young, actually, literally, young ladies up here, Cootney County has taken the lead, once again, that not to be outdone, to initiate a recall of Governor Little. I don't know how many of you are familiar with this, but there's a petition that's being circulated statewide to gather one hundred eighty-three thousand signatures, which presumably would then get it on the ballot for recall. Not sure of the whole procedure. But the funny thing is, when I saw the announcement of this effort, there are like five or six young, I say young ladies, they were all under forty. And I'm thinking, did they go out of their way to recruit this eclectic group of young women who are hard riders? I, I have no clue, but this is what goes on. And, and we even get threats, you know, of recalling whatnot. These people are serious. They stop at nothing. And this is where we've come to up here, and sadly, we're going to lose this region. And you know what? Here's the thing. If the county goes down, the city will follow. And when I say go down, we have three county commissioners. I'm done after these two years. I finished my four, I do another two, and I'm done. And so if Brent Regan gets one more vote, the county goes down. And I'll tell you exactly what I mean. When you get into the area of land use, you know, the comprehensive plan and land use, I'll make this real quick. He has long advocated that the county should be one-zone. One-zone means anything goes. So if you're sitting comfortably and presumably secure on your five-acre lot, I could put a strip mine next door. No zoning. Why does he care? He sits on a hundred and sixty acres. He's buffered. And there are many people, John Birchers, as was pointed out earlier, and others who subscribe to the theory that government shouldn't plan, leave it to the free market, anything goes, the county's one-zone. When that occurs, the next target will be the city. Well, it's kind of hard to do it in the city because of the density, but still in all, okay? There could still be issues. So this is, you know, this is what we deal with. This is what we put up with. And until and unless we change county structure, and that's not likely to happen in the short run, three commissioners, if you get two votes, control of the county. And so far, they've been denied that. But if they get one, they have one now. If they get one more, there goes the county.